To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, as always, let's continue to cover our city, Lord God, continue to cover our children, continue to cover our police and our fire. Lord, we thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Continue to cover each and every one of us as we make decisions that regard our city. And, Lord God, please continue to cover our residents and keep them safe, in Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple. Ricles.
Here. We have a president at the moment. Next up, mayor's address.
Good evening, council. Mayor could not be here, so he asked me to step in and give his report. A couple of things before I go through the packet that I handed all the council this evening. The public notice is out for the 34-lot Clark Field Residential Auction that's coming up on August 3rd at 5:30 PM at Lost Marsh Golf Course. I know this has been talked about at council several times, so I'm not going to go through a bunch of details, just want to let you know that it's a physi- uh, physi- excuse me, is officially out, and anybody that will want to bid at the auction is asked to preregister. So if they want to, they can go to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission office up on the third floor, I believe it's office 315, but don't quote me on that, and they'll be able to preregister, or they can just show up that day, they'll be able to preregister at the event. The minimum bids for the lots are anywhere from 14,000 to 18,000, depending on side, and obviously, we do have minimum requirements of size of the houses, and there's certain covenants to protect the neighborhood, meaning, you know, we're not going to let somebody go in there and build a 500-square-foot home, for example. So I just want to make sure that if you know folks that have talked about being interested, or if you've heard from people that said they were looking for new housing, which I know I've heard from, from time to time, please inform them. Also, we've sent out emails and notices to many of the residential groups in the area. So we want home builders to come out and take a look. I think somebody had reached out to the mayor's office and said, "What if a home builder buys a lot and builds it and rents it out?" But it's just not practical. Most home builders that are spending about 400,000 or plus on new homes are selling those homes to new homeowners. So we definitely are asking home builders to come out and take a look. We do have requirements on how quickly they have to build, so you cannot buy a lot and hold on to it, there is a certain time period that you have to make sure the house is built. So I just want to pass that on to you. More of a technicality, I want to make sure all the council knows, and I think you do, that the City Hall elevator that operates from the ground floor to the third floor will be inoperable, inoperable, starting August 1st for about 10 weeks. It has to be repaired. So because there is the other elevator that still works that goes from the first floor to the third floor, that one will remain operable. Because we have to do this, we are making accommodations for people with accessibility needs on the ground floor. We have a conference room where there could be meetings that will include Zoom that they will be able to use. We're also trying a new system where there's going to be a cashier in the actual building department now that will be able to take payments for things that in the past, they typically have had to go up to the controller's office to pay for. So we're hoping that if this is successful with Megan's new software system, Megan, our city controller, new software system, that if this is successful, this will be a permanent change for City Hall, where people will no longer have to go to the billing department, apply for a permit, then they're sent upstairs to the controller's office to make payment, then they got to come back downstairs to the billing department to prove they made payment. It's really inefficient. So this new system hopefully is going to work well, and we're currently working on making sure the computer is set up and the software is set up, so if there's any issues at that time, the billing department will be able to help out. Okay, so with that, I gave all the council people a packet. The packet is statistics that we heard a lot about during the public meeting. It is statistics for all the 24-hour gas stations from 2019 to present. It's every incident that has occurred during those hours at those specific stations. So I know that from talking to several of you on the council, it doesn't sound like this ordinance is coming out tonight, which makes sense, you're going to want to review the information that you received, and then we could talk about that, obviously, after your review. But I think what you're going to find specifically is some dis- uh, per- is some numbers that are way too high for these types of businesses. And I think that's why this ordinance is being, has been put together at this time, to address some of the things that we heard during public comment or during the public meeting. I heard Mr. Stoya talk about how this is a slippery slope, you do it to one group, you know, it's going to go to the next one, like next, you know, next week, we're going to say, "Hey, we want to close Dairy Queen down at 3 o'clock." I heard the same thing back in the day when we acquired the River Park Apartments. And it was a very similar story in that the River Park Apartments had extremely high police calls and police incidents, where most of our resources, and I remember the number being very high, I don't want to make up a number, but I recall it being somewhere around 80% of our police calls at certain times were going to those River Park Apartments. And I heard people say, "If you're acquiring them, or you're going to eminent domain them, you're going to take them, then, you know, you're just going to do it to the next guy a month from now, and the next guy a year from now, and it's a slippery slope." Well, that's not what happened. We acquired the apartments, the, obviously, all the police calls and the issues there went away. Some people unfortunately did lose their jobs because there were employed people there. But you go to Oxbow Landing now, and you have a beautiful new development, over $65 million worth of investment, something that Hammond could be very proud of, something Highland is very proud of, that they were a part of, and we don't have police calls at those sites anywhere in the vicinity of what it was back when those apartments were operable. So, and I don't mean to be exaggerative, but, you know, when I hear that if you're doing it to one, it's just going to get worse and worse, you are always going to be the council that's going to make a decision on whether an ordinance makes sense or not. So just because a second ordinance gets put forward doesn't mean you're going to approve that one if you do approve this one. So I always hate those arguments about predictions in the future of why you shouldn't do something now. When we're talking about this ordinance, of course, we care about people that lose their jobs, of course, we care about business owners that are trying to run a successful business and make money, but in the end, you're really talking about the greater good. Is this protecting our residents? Is this protecting other businesses? Is this protecting our police officers that are disproportionately responding to calls at these locations more than other businesses? And, and I think it might have been Councilwoman Vines that brought this up, it's exactly what happened at McTavern's, when we had several incidents. You know, we have power in those situations because there's a liquor license board that we can go to and say, "Look at this, do something about it," and they could pull their liquor license and the business is killed. So because of that, we were able to have McTavern's closed. Happened again on Kennedy Avenue at Coach's Corner. We were having a number of incidents on a regular basis where people were getting hurt. Gunshots were happening on a regular basis where bystanders could get hurt, not just people at the business, but people in that neighborhood could get hurt. And we end up acquiring the property and shutting down the business. When you are looking at the calls and those reports, even if they are not gunshot calls, you keep in mind that every time a police officer, and it's always going to be more than one, is responding to one of those police calls at the gas station, that's that officer not watching our neighborhoods, not watching our homes, and not protecting other businesses. So I just want to, you know, put my two cents in when it comes to this. I also want to bring up that there was a bar, and I'm not going to mention the name, that was having some issues, and we reached out to them, and they came and they met us right here in the mayor's conference room, and we sat down, and we said, "Here's what's going on," and they said, "You're right. Here's what I want to do to fix it, and can I work with you to fix it?" And they did. They made changes, our police officers were in the room when those conversations were happening. That business, as far as I know, to this day, is not having those issues anymore, and they're in operation and successful, and, and everybody wins. So it's not just overreaching government coming in and saying, "This is what's going to happen," and that's all there is to it, it's, "We need to work together to fix this problem." And so that's, I just want to make sure that we talk through some of the things that came up during the public comment. I think I hit on everything that I wanted to, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. President.
Yes.
All right, Phil, just glancing through this information, no shots to you or anything, but just glancing, because right now, we can't, we just got it, so thank you for getting it for us, because if it was voted on tonight, it would be very bad that we just got it right now.
Agreed. I wouldn't suggest you vote on it this evening.
Yes, so we, we know that we, we're tabling it for now. But just glancing through this, I'm just pulling away from some of this stat that it just proves right here that approximately six have more issues than the other, let's say about 12 or so more. So just with this data, just, just glancing, number like how many things are on the sheets versus, and the dates from 2019 to now, it still does not give enough information that says we have a big problem at our gas stations. So just looking at it from this standpoint of just saying, with these sheets that are stapled, there's more activity at these gas stations versus these. The other thing is, we said this in, in our committee meeting, that we know that it's people that are causing crimes, it's not our gas station owners. So made suggestions to those owners about joining our FUSES program. I also asked that we get our police departments so we can get around to our businesses in the city to actually get that information out to all of our businesses, because we want them to be good neighbors and participate in that program when we have things like criminal activity happening, that they have those access to the cameras. Now, they have live feed to them, they do not get a recording, but they're able to see something when a call is dispatched. So we want those business owners and even residents to understand that program, and I think maybe we can get maybe a video or something that explains the program that we can put out maybe on our TikTok that we have, or maybe on our Go Hammond page, so that they have more information. Also made a suggestion that they, if they have too many signs up on their windows, they get them down. We talked about a security guard overnight, because I really feel that this ordinance, we're rushing it, that's why we, we had to pull it back, but we're rushing it, that we can probably put some other things in place, that if they don't, maybe obliged by them, that then we can go to this extreme, but right now, this is still a little extreme, and you can pass that on, and I know mayor's probably watching, that we can look into. But I'm not seeing enough, just with glancing while you were talking, enough that still supports why we're wanting this ordinance to exist for all gas stations, okay? And let me pull up my note right here to say to you, if anybody else wants to comment, I'll get back to it. But I really do feel that it's our businesses' right to be open, and they should have that free right to, if they need to close, and we just put different parameters in place, but we don't force them to do certain things, because I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be, want to be forced to do something.
So my response to that is, that's why there's something in the ordinance that allows each individual gas station owner to petition to not have to be closed during certain hours, and I think if they have statistics and things in place that prove that they are more safe and more secure and don't have the issues that some of the other ones do, I think that's where the Board of Works can look at that and make a decision. So I think it protects them still, but at the same time, it protects us from some of the gas stations that are not as safe as the others.
Mr. President, so my question is, are we saying that it's the gas stations that are the problem, meaning the gas station owners, the employees that are causing the crime, or is it that people like with our, our state gun laws that have changed, that say, anyone with the age of 18, if they don't have a felony, they can carry, they have the right to carry without a permit? Or is it that maybe, you know, even in the instance of if we had a hospital, maybe that young man wouldn't have passed away, and they didn't have to go so far? We have a lot of other things, and I think we really need to dive back into the root of our issues in our city than to go all the way across the board with this one.
Well, I think what, what I would say is, we have a disproportionate amount of calls at gas stations between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, and because of that, I think that is where it is the responsibility of administration and the council to work together to try and address the situation. Am I saying, are we blaming the employees and the business owners? I obviously can't say something like that, because I don't know specific employees, and I don't know specific business owners, being honest, but I could tell you by looking at some of the incidents on those lists, specific gas stations, things have been going on for a very long time, and they have not addressed it. They have not tried. We've, we've sat back and haven't done anything, haven't put any ordinances forward or tried to change some rules to make it more safe. They certainly aren't doing anything. So in my estimation, at some point, you've got to say, "Look, too many people are, are getting killed, too many incidents are happening, too many police calls," and by the way, the incidents you're seeing are the calls that, that came in. I think I heard from one of the police officers at the last meeting that came forward that said, "When he pulls up to a, a certain gas station, that all of a sudden, a bunch of people scatter," which means, you know, we're constantly having patrols go by these areas because we know there are problems, and that is taking resources away from all the other businesses and residents that also need to make sure we're safe and secure. So that would be my response to that.
Mr. President, isn't it their, their responsibility to also drive these areas as, as well? And I'm not shaming our police or anything like that, but if they're driving past and people are fleeing, that means because they've made their presence known, that things stop. So to say we, we can go to other areas or things like that, it's like, wait a minute, if they're driving past, we can go back to the Juneteenth event that we had, there was no incidents that happened because we had police presence. When presence is there, it's just like being in a classroom, I'm a teacher. If I'm not in a classroom, then my students can run them up, but if I'm there because of my presence, then they're not doing the things that they would normally do if they don't have someone's eyes on them. So having that access to FUSES, it gives us that thing, because again, they have the phone call that happens now, someone is triggered to look on that camera and see, okay, it was this car, and now they can get more details, because not saying they're big brother or anything like that, but it's just giving them more access to be able to pull out these things and say, "Okay, we're the good neighbor." So that's why suggesting to the business owners, before we say, "Let's stop your hours from here," yes, we, if we're going to stop them, and then now we're sending them to another board to approve them, that does not make sense to me either, to send them to somewhere else when we're the ones saying, "Okay, we're closing you down from 12 to 5:00."
Well, using your analogy in the, in the classroom, you know, I've heard this many, many times, that teachers have to spend an inordinate amount of time with students that cause problems, and if you didn't have those students, or if you were putting something in, in place that made sure those students didn't cause as many problems, then the teacher could then pay attention to all the other students that are doing great. And I think it's the same with gas stations, honestly. We have our police that are constantly having to drive by these stations that are having nonstop issues, and it does pull police presence away from everybody else that doesn't have the same amount of problems. So I'm trying to use the analogy that you, that you were going with. But it's okay, I can obviously tell we may not agree 100% on this. I think right now, the, the ordinance is in committee, so you guys have an opportunity to look at it, pick at it, see if this is something that you decide that it makes the most sense, maybe there's a change or two that, that council wants to see happen in the ordinance. I mean, obviously, that's why we have you reviewing it.
All right, does anybody else have anything they'd like to?
Yes. Good evening. A few things, just to get a couple things real quick. Is there a packet, particularly developing with information on the auction and the rules and the down payment, and is there homeowners association, et cetera, or how do we, how do the public get information?
This has been, this has been put in the newspapers, it certainly has been all over social media. So the answer is yes. I want to, I don't want to spend too much time while everybody's sitting here, but there is information on here that says that you can go to the redevelopment office, and as far as whether you pick up the packet or just fill it out there, that's what I'm not 100% sure on.
The new software, is it fully operational?
No. No, we are absolutely still working through that. It's a very extensive process, because you're changing so many different, each department has been using different software and different programs, so to integrate all of them, it's going to take time. However, for August 1st, we're trying to have it in place that you will be able to make payment at the billing department for things that you typically would have had to go to the controller's office to handle.
Back to the auction, are developers allowed or builders allowed to bid on parcels?
They are.
They are.
I believe that we have rules in here, it says you can bid up to four parcels.
Is that different than the meetings we held at the arena where there would not be developers allowed to bid on these things?
I think you always want, I mean, there is a lot of very strong, great residential developments out there that are-
Is a builder or developer to buy at least up to four lots?
I believe that's where we ended at, yes.
Okay. And just real quickly, on the gas station issue, as you were talking, you mentioned that there was a bar that had a problem, and you all sat down with the administration, the police, and the bar owner. Has that stuff taken place with the gas station owners?
Again, this is, it's a different scenario. We have a oversight tool with bars that we don't have with gas stations. We can't shut off the gas station license. We can pull your liquor license if you're having incidents. So in those situations, it makes it a lot easier to sit down with certain business owners and, and have a conversation.
So there has been a sit-down with the gas station owners?
I would say there's been individual conversations over the years when there's been incidents.
But during this process of the ordinance being drawn?
No, this is at the end of, you know, obviously, years and years of police calls and incidents, where it got to the point where the city is saying, or the administration's saying, "We've got to make some change to try and address this." You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
Did you think there was a plat, we could give a survey on that, the whole thing for their district, that you put new stuff homes in? Do you have that, or do I can have, on the call to sex, there might be in there, I get some people talking about our race.
Yeah.
I ran in the packet.
So I think in the packet that they can get at the redevelopment office, it'll show you the different parcels, and it gives all the parcel numbers. I don't know that there's a specific plat that every person gets, but there will be obviously visuals that we could show them, you know, which each parcel represents what the number is.
Mr. President, I actually have the same question as Councilman Calwinski, just in terms of if we've gone about having individual conversations with the owners, because I do feel like that could be a good start, and at least to Councilman Warple's point, will give them an opportunity to share what they might be interested in doing in terms of helping us solve this issue as well. But my other question, Phil, which is a much easier one, is you talked about the elevator improvements, is that part of the long-term upgrades to this building?
It is, it's part of the, the green project that we've taken on, where we've changed the HVAC and windows, and we're fixing the elevators as part of that as well, that's correct. And I don't, you know, talking about having conversations with business owners, I feel like, I know that, for example, the mayor and a few others have spoken to some of the business owners, but hey, if that's, you know, if a conversation can happen and things can be talked through, I, obviously, that's something that can sometimes be productive. I think the issue is, when you look at some of those incidents in some of the gas stations, you're going to see that this has been ongoing for a very, very long time, and I can guarantee you, when the police officers are responding to those calls, they are talking to the employees that are working at the time, and, you know, making suggestions and saying, "We've got to do A, B, and C to fix this," and then obviously, it's just hasn't worked. So, but I hear, and I, I agree with what you're saying about communication is never going to hurt things, that's for sure.
Is the, one last question, is the audio equipment got a completion date in this room? Because I can hear you fairly well, but I know people can't hear us oftentimes, and we can't hear all the time either. Do you know when the song's going to be done?
When I was sitting out there during the public hearing, I could hear certain council people much better and clearer than others. There's a, so 100% true. Unfortunately, I don't have the timeline off the top of my head, but I could probably find out before the end of the meeting.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Excuse me, anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman.
.....................
Put a motion and a second, approval of minutes. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles.
Yes. That's a 9-0, Councilman Warple is in, is in chambers too, I didn't mention that, sorry. Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated July 17th, 2023, and ending with claims dated July 19th, 2023, claim number 4616 through claim number 5030 inclusive, for a total of $8,454,184.54, I so move.
Second.
Put a motion and a second for approval of claims. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Ricles.
Yes. Approval claims passes 9-0. Next up, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance number 23-14, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli, an appropriation ordinance for the City of Hammond, Indiana, a general obligation judgment funding bonds.
Now's the time for anybody who wishes to speak from the public on appropriation ordinance, number 23-14.
George Stoya. The last time the mayor spoke about this, informing us what was going on, he stressed that he had not been mayor when these suits started, and, I mean, when, when these criminal actions occurred, but he was mayor when these suits started. And for example, Larry, Larry Mays, his, he won in 2006. Granted, the mayor was a new mayor, but nonetheless, he was mayor, and the Hill case was 2010 it was filed, clearly, within the scope of the mayor's tenure as, as, as mayor, repeating myself. Anyway, that's not the only one that's pending. If I read the article correct, and I read it quickly, by Sarah Reese of the Northwest Indiana Times, she reported back in November of last year that Darrell K. Pinkins and Roosevelt Glenn have another case against Brother Solon for, for the, for stuff that happened in 1989 on the bump and rum rape stuff. You guys might remember some of that stuff that was going on on Klein Avenue, I believe. they set one, one of the spots. So, we still have that pending out there. Brother Solon has cost us some serious cash here. People forget, uh, that, that, one thing the mayor also failed to mention, uh, last time he spoke was, we got hit, a lot, a lot of those cases, I believe, should've been settled earlier, 'cause we're rolling the litigation dice here. You know, one, one part about being an attorney, and any attorney will tell you this, is being able to predict the outcome of your cases. And we lost on Mays for $9 million. He got him to settle for 4.5, I think it was, something like that. Now we got hit for, we got lit up for $25 million and punitive damages. I mean, the punitive damage aspects, it's not so much the money, but the nature of the character of the conduct of Solon during the, the Mays thing. So, these lawyers, I think, should have foreseen and maybe been a little more circumspect about proceeding the trial. $25 mil, thank God the mayor, uh, got it reduced, but still, you know, an argument can be made, and I'm making it now, he might be, he might be rolling the litigation dice. And is he rolling the litigation dice with the, uh, Pinkins and Glenn cases? This doesn't look good. Again, Detective Solon is, is, seems to be the, I think he was the lead detective in this, again, and it has to do with, uh, withholding exculpatory evidence, manipulating witnesses, and fabricating evidence. This is not just, you know, we're in civil court here, preponderance evidence, hey, he might have it, you know, we got a chance of winning, uh-uh, not with this stuff. I mean, they've got, uh, in the, in the case with Mays, they had some good attorneys on it. Levinson's a good attorney. I think Jensen's a pretty good attorney, but you know, uh, he only has good as the facts, you know, that's, you know, they couldn't do anything. But again, that's why I say there might be some rolling the dice. You guys as council, I would, I would hope, you may wanna bring this up with the mayor. I'm not saying he's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying, rolling the dice is rolling the dice. We're not, you know, we're not, you know, we, we don't have a blank check here. Can't keep coming up with judgment bonds. I don't know what our debt now, is now. It's, uh, somebody told me, or they keep saying it's somewhere around 200 million plus. Now, I know, you, it's not the debt, it's how you, how you service the debt, yada, yada, yada. Okay, that's fine, but we're still not a blank check. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Anybody else? Anybody else from 23-14? Your name, sir?
My name is John Beckman. I'm here to request, on the 243 Detroit Street.
Hold on, sir, this is specifically a public hearing on ordinance 2314.
Oh.
You can speak out, if you can sign up for after the meeting if you'd like to do public expression.
Okay.
Anybody else? Public hearing's closed. Next up, communication.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
We all received, uh, I believe it was July 20th, and communication from Mr. Stoya, and I ask that it be duly noted and placed on file.
Second.
Motion to place the letter from George Stoya on file? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Letter's placed on file, passes nine zero.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Um, I know that Councilman Tyler has also sent notification to all the council, but the School City of Hammond will be having their back-to-school celebration on August 2nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I know that I've already made a donation and we're hoping that you all will make a donation as well to the back-to-school celebration with them, um, and also come out and show your support on that day.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes?
I provided a copy for everyone, but resident from my district, Vanessa Allison, who was also an employee at one of the gas stations in the city, uh, submitted a letter, uh, in opposition of 23-16, so just want that to go on file as well.
Just let, ask if you place on file, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, like, so. Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I'd like to announce, uh, the solid waste management of Lake County will be doing a shredding of personal items, insecticides, oil-based paints in a specified oil-based base, syringes and sharps on 9/23, I'll be mentioning it again as, as we go along, uh, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Conkey Street, uh, with the street department. Thank you.
And what kind of, uh, materials was that again?
Uh, shredding of personal items, insecticides, oil-based paints, syringes and sharps, uh, razor blades, whatever.
Are batteries included in that?
Uh, no.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Koinski.
See the communication that the Glassley Park Neighborhood Association will hold this meeting tomorrow, Tuesday at 6:30 at Hammond Mahox at the corner of 141st and Kiamet Avenue in the North Hammond area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 2314 and 2315.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd also like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be in September. Uh, I will announce the date, uh, later, um, in one of our meetings. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet on Tuesday, uh, August 22nd, 6:00 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet in September, once, uh, the school opens up again. Harrison Park Crime Watch, which incidentally, this past Saturday had a block party at, uh, Harrison Park, and it was very, very nice. Uh, the director there, Ruby, did a great job of putting that together and bringing the neighborhood together, and that's what we do with crime watches, bringing the, uh, neighborhood together. Her next meeting will be, um, Wednesday, August 2nd, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Uh, Hessville Crime Watch will meet August 17th, 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet in September, uh, at Irving School, once school starts back up again. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet October, November. Uh, I'll get specific dates on that, uh, because they only meet twice a year. The Whiting Roberts Dale Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, August 10th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. Uh, also coming up, uh, it's sponsored by Mayor McDermott and the City of Hammond is National Night Out. Uh, this is a crime and drug prevention event, uh, that's held, that will be held up at the pavilion there. Uh, I just got an email that there's going to be a dunk tank and the mayor's going to be, uh, in the dunk tank for about a half an hour, so come on out and dunk the mayor. Uh, they're going to have police vehicles, fire vehicles, uh, the, um, uh, Lake County Sheriff will have his, um, helicopter there, and just come out and meet all of the, uh, the people who serve and protect us every day. Uh, I can't urge you enough, given the, uh, the, um, ordinance that is before us with regard to the, uh, gas stations, come to a crime watch meeting. Find out what is happening in your neighborhood. There is always a community policing officer there. They always give statistics about what is happening in your neighborhood, so you know what is going on and how to protect yourself, your family, and your property, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Capital Improvements Board met on July 19th. Eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars was approved to First Group Engineering to go towards the design of the community crossing matching grant, project on Summer Street between Indianapolis Boulevard and 165th. We also added to that grant, um, in order to get the full usage of the grant that the state provides half the funding for of up to a million dollars. We also included on that grant 169th Street from Southeastern to North Cot, and the fee is designed for construction and engineering of the expansion of the program. They also approved $49,566 with site services. Under an agreement for pavement preservation, four sections of the Erie-Lacawanna Trail between Columbia Avenue and the pedestrian tunnel, tunnel underneath the Interstate 8094 are in poor condition and required restoration. And that's all we passed that night.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, ordinance third and final reading.
Ordinance 23-14 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli, an appropriation ordinance for the City of Hammond, Indiana, general obligation judgment funding bonds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2314.
Second.
The motion and a second for 23-14. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, this is the, uh, appro, appropriation of $9,600,000 in the James Hill case.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2314 passes nine zero.
Ordinance 23-15 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance of the common council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to pay costs of a judgment and/or settlement owed by the city and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and on account of the issuance of the bonds. Other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repelling ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2314.
15?
15.
Uh, 15, yes, thank you.
Second. The motion and a second for 23-15. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this gives approval for the issuance of bonds, uh, the bonds in the amount of Uh, this is over 10 years and it will, um, uh, mean about $3.44 per year to the homeowner on their taxes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 23-15 passes nine zero.
President Rakels, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, number 10, introduction of ordinance.
Ordinance 23-17 sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, and ordinance vacating, vacating a 3,021-foot portion of 125th Street, lying east of Kiamet Avenue in the 800 to 1,300 blocks of 125th Street in the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Koinski.
I move that 23-17 has through first and second reading. You refer to council's committee of the whole at by 15 on 8/14/23, and you have a public hearing on August 14, 2023. Second.
The motion is seconded by Councilman Emerson, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Koinski.
This is, uh, the property that is the trail, what used to be the road between, uh, the south basin of George Lake and the north basin of George Lake. Uh, back many decades ago, that was also used by, uh, BP, Adam Cole's research and, uh, training facility to test their gasoline products on that road, uh, which of course does no longer take place, and so the city is with, to vacate that property, uh, which is long overdue, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. First and second, passes nine zero, 23-17.
President Rakels, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Next up, resolutions, there are none. Number 12, new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business is closed. Next up, public expression.
Good evening, Board. I'm here with concerns of the community, uh, about why are all these mega-million-dollar contracts going on right in our backyard and no one that looks like me have one of those jobs anywhere? They're not employed for any of these companies. We are being excluded. Last time I brought this up, they said, "Well, you can't do that. That's illegal." That's not true, Board. They built Hammond Central on it. Hammond Central had to have so many blacks, so many Hispanics, so many people from the city of Hammond. So, don't tell me what you, what they can't put in there. They don't wanna do it. We are being excluded and the work is going on right in the middle of our community. And I know you all have something to say about who gets those bids. We need to put wording in there. If you want this contract, these are the stipulations. We need to be included also. this contract, these are the stipulations. We need to be included also. I mean, look at, not one. If I saw one, I don't see any. And if you put the stipulations in there, don't tell me, I know you can't tell them who to hire, put the stipulation in there, and they'll find them overnight. So I'm just asking the board, don't exclude us on these contracts. Give us our fair share also. Thank you.
Mr. Buck. Next up, George Stoya. Mr. Beckman, hold on.
I'm here to request the city council to ask the park board to recruit Purdue to fix the Robert, the George Carlson ramp. They got plenty of engineers that need Golick stuff, or need stuff done, and to take out the invasive species. You know, anyway, that's, those are the two things I would ask the city council to recommend to the park board.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. It's me again, George Stoya.
Hey.
I wanted to clarify something that Phil brought up, thinking, taking issue with what I was saying. This is the first time that this city, as far as I know, has ever used and applied a blanket, blanket ordinance to blanket all these businesses. In the past, he brings up Coach's Corner, the Parkview Apartments. Yeah, they were able to address those on an individual basis. But because they can't, because of, I guess, I suspect some of the things I raised in my letters, the constitutional issues, they can't do that here. If you could address these gas stations on a one-by-one basis, and you isolate them through your statistics, but keep in mind about statistics, they give you patterns. It's a retrospective. Doesn't necessarily, I don't know, it's predictability value. You know, that's a little more ambiguous. No one knows how much you can predict with that. You can't, you don't know when John Doe is going to get up in the morning and go out and have something on his mind where, and then he, I'm going to get this guy, you know. Anything can happen. These things are, I'm not saying they're random, but nobody, they're predictability. The statistics, that's the problem with it all, is they don't predict particular events. You can't, you can't use them. You can guide yourself. Anyway, it's kind of like a constellation of stars, maybe that one analogy or metaphor. So, so that's why I have been so, what's the word I'm looking for, intentional about this whole approach that the mayor's using. He's going to blanket the entire city, and I say, yeah, it's a slippery slope. Because what if happens if it comes up in the future, and there's something that the liquor law or this or that doesn't apply what? He's going to blanket that too? Yeah, apparently he will. He's got no qualms about it. Remember, he told us when he first brought this up, when you guys first introduced it, it was a no-brainer. Do you guys still feel it's a no-brainer? I don't think it's a no-brainer. That's how he's trying to pass it down, just shove it on there, just shove it in. Let's go, let's do it. And let the litigation come, because it's going to come if you guys don't approach it with an informed, obviously, we can't get informed consent of, maybe we can, I don't know, of the government. Personally, I think we ought to put it to a referendum, that the people vote. It affects the whole city. Let's get a vote out there. You know, why make it, you know, the mayor's choice? It's a unique thing. It ain't like the Parkview and all that. But don't sit there and say, oh, that I'm being too harsh here. That's not the case at all. He wants to take away people's rights. Right now, these people got to get a variance in effect. What now they can do for nothing, what they're free to do at their own discretion voluntarily, now he wants to impose some sort of rule or order of things, where now they got to seek permission for what they could formally do, for nothing. So, another thing, it's not part of what I wanted to say here, but I wanted to introduce the July twenty, I wrote two letters on this. I'm not sure if you, because I got some mix-up.
We got it, George.
The January tenth, you got the seventeenth, but not the tenth.
Seventeenth, right.
Okay, this is the tenth. It's signed.
Thank you, George. Hugh Jaisol, J-A-S-O-L. Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. Mr. President. I just wanted to go over a few questions. Some of them are rhetorical, some I actually like answers to. And of course, I'm going back to the bridge issue right now. We're still waiting results from the IDEM public hearing on that. And some of the information that was put out there prior to that, I wanted to go back into, because some of the information that was put out by administration of elected officials was completely wrong. Wrong. Okay? And I think some of these people should be held accountable. So in the beginning, for the longest time, you know, we were talking about this was going to be a solution for the kids to get to and from school. I know you, Mr. Rakels, said on numerous occasions that this bridge would solve that problem. I remember you saying it on Facebook, and I remember confronting you on that particular issue and telling you that it was a two-mile-long walk. And then I also heard Mr. Talion here blame the kids, saying that they were just showing off, and they were hopping up over the trains and things like that. Did any of you see the ProPublica photographs on there and videos? Did it look like those kids were showing off? I know where Mr. Talion grew up, he never had to jump over those trains to get to and from school. So he wasn't really, he was given a false equivalency to that. The thing is, you know, we were promised that that bridge was going to solve the problem for millions of dollars. If that's the case, then why did the mayor just say now they're thinking of building two bridges? Because the first one isn't going to solve the problem? Now you're going to build a second bridge? That's ridiculous. We also had the facts about this bridge. The city engineer said that the underpass would cost, this is in January, said it would cost at least twice as much as the bridge. This was in January, in front of us saw for a mayor's night out event. Three months later, on the design team that he was a member of, it comes out that the bridge is actually more expensive than the underpass. Just the opposite. The bridge through the woods, eleven million, one hundred and ninety thousand. The grand underpass, eight million, four hundred and eighty thousand, a difference of over three million dollars less. Less. The mayor said, what was the reason? We were asking the mayor, what was the reason, mayor, that you chose this option? He said, cost. Now what do we do? Do we hold him to it? If it was cost, we building an underpass and not destroying our woods. Think about it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.